This is the second hearing. After this one, we will be working to finalize our numbers. We did make a couple of changes, three changes, I guess, after our first public hearing. So, we have added a full-time firefighter position. We restored the captain's position that somehow in the shuffle got removed from the law enforcement. And the third item?
The restructure of the municipal court where we realigned the prosecutor salary and increased that to accommodate.
Okay. Yep. Okay. So, realigning the prosecutor's salary a little bit so that it's on an hourly basis with the anticipation of McGirt. We don't know really what the hours required will be. So, with that, few highlights from the mayor's budget message. Does anyone in the audience need a copy of the budget? Anybody like to have one in hand? We think have plenty, don't we, Michelle? Okay. Nobody needs one? Then, as presented, this budget is balanced and it meets the funding requirements of the city's rainy day reserve. We are projecting revenue that we believe is reasonable and attainable, but yet it is not conservative. Projecting our revenue was a little bit of an issue because of the unexpected increase in our sales tax related to the pandemic. And that provided us with some one-time funding, but not funding that we could be assured will be continuing. So, that had an impact on how this budget was developed. This budget does include a 3% across-the-board raise for our employees and a essential service bonus that will be paid out to most full-time employees in the November, November of $1,500. We also are proposing a $5,000 across-the-board increase to the salaries for those employees in the solid waste department. We've had tremendous turnover there and we're hoping that this will help stabilize that workforce. The capital improvement fund is used to account for the major purchases, major projects of the departments. Cash is budgeted to be moved from the general fund into capital projects to cover those expenditures. And just some highlights, I won't read the whole list to you. The fire department should be receiving a replacement for the 1974 pumper truck. We'll be acquiring 10 patrol vehicles for law enforcement. We're adding a siren because our community is growing. The street department will be getting a new dump truck, sand spreader, and snow plow. And we have money in the street department for wayfinding signage should that project come together. We'll be repairing some leaking windows at the library and painting the exterior of that building. We have a number of improvements to playgrounds at various parks across town and some upgrades to the Riverlink's golf course. We're budgeting 375,000 for trail construction and bridges. And the new street and sidewalk sales tax will provide what we anticipate to be $1,950,000 toward major street and sidewalk upgrades and improvements. We've added three part-time positions, one within law enforcement to allow for some patrol staffing on weekends, one in the cashiering and municipal court to be shared between those two, and one in the animal control area. And one other personnel change within the Parks and Recreation Department. Heather Toronto has been promoted from coordinator to superintendent. So, the city's finances have stabilized. We're in a strong financial position. Our revenue is covering our general fund expenses and providing some additional. We have reserves that were unspent from the excess sales tax and some of the recovery and care funds that we received that we have available for some one-time things. In addition to the things that we're buying through the budget, the city continues to work toward developing a joint venture to provide high-speed internet to the city. We're working to develop a public housing authority. And we're working to strengthen public safety through consolidation of the 911 center and our agreements with Cherokee Nation relating to the McGirt decision. Those are the overview. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to City Administrator Alan Chapman and Michelle Hollins. These two people have spent countless hours and many, many meetings, many, many discussions putting this budget together, and I cannot thank them enough.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm just happy and pleased to report that we can provide a balanced budget. This budget was not created in a vacuum. We've had numerous meetings with the department head starting back in February. So, we've sat at this table and formulated and compiled this budget together as a team. Michelle has worked diligently behind the scenes to the point of, you know, going cross-eyed looking at it. So, Michelle, if you'd like to make any comments at this time? I'll be happy to answer any questions any of the councilors might have concerning the budget.
Or anyone in the audience, anyone who is here attending, if you have questions?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, so, we're all clear, like I said last time here. Notice you guys left that spot out for the personal sweep, sweep, sweeping person. That's about a $44,000 position there, roughly, given to take care of. At this time, we do not have no one on it. I don't know when it'll be able to, but come July, you guys will need to modify your SM4 permit. That's one of your BMPs. So, when we get a call, want to know why the streets are the way they are. My deal is legislative body made a decision to cut the position. So...
Just clarifying, at this point, you're saying that you will not be running the street sweeper unless we replace this position?
We don't have anybody. That is correct. We pull somebody off that is one of our labors or basically one of our operators to run it, there's no one else to operate a piece of equipment. So, that's where we stand at.
Just a reminder, Mr. Smith, that several departments have had significant cuts to their employees over the last two years, and they have regrouped, reassigned, and managed to still cover what is required of their department.
We won't be running anybody out at nighttime. I'd say we won't take care of day-to-day deals. But street department salaries was cut $200,000 last year. So, you've taken a mechanic, you've taken a sweep-sweeper, street sweeper, and, you know, the biggest fear is when people retire or move on, that legislative body doesn't refill the positions.
Noted.
Thank you.
Kevin, aren't we required, Kevin, aren't we required to have a street sweeper?
You've got 24 BMPs in your SM4.
I don't know what BMPs and SM4s are.
Your SM4 is your permit, your stormwater permit. You have 24 that the city says, here's what we're gonna do. You're currently only doing three of them. Your operations, the change of your SM4 permit starts in July. So, with that being said, you all will need to modify your permits. So...
And I can speak to a little bit of that. Over the last year, we've been without a stormwater manager. And a lot of those BMPs have fell to the wayside due to COVID, the lack of manpower being able to fulfill those things. It is something that Taylor and I both have met with the EQ and visited about. And the conversations with the EQ was that in the future, we were going to try to rectify a lot of those best management practices and recover from where we've been lacking in that for stormwater. There is a tremendous amount of stormwater issues in our city. And for having to deal with not having a stormwater person over the finance situation, financial situation this last year has been, to least say, a struggle, not to mention the abatement and code enforcement part of it, which affects stormwater because of the tall weeds and the unkempt canals and creeks and stormwater ways. So, the, the promise the city made with the MS4 permit through DEQ was is that we would provide a street sweeper and a person to do it. And when you take someone and you put them in there in those positions, they can concentrate on getting that position taken care of, whether it's abatement, whether it's being a police officer, whether it's being a street sweeper. And when you spread it out over three or four different jobs to get it done, you can't concentrate on three or four different jobs and get them done well. You got, you know, several jobs that are done partially.
Just one clarification. You are about to wrap up your interviews to hire that stormwater person.
Absolutely. Yeah. We've been interviewing for the last, this last week, and we got another candidate that we gotta look at. But we are looking to hire someone in that position moving forward. So, it is, and like I said, this is recovery from the losing that stormwater person and not having someone over the period of the last year. So, it's, it's, it's been a program. Like, and my next comment would be, I see that you guys did leave the code compliance officer in there, and that position will need to be filled. It doesn't just need to sit there in there in that budget because, in reality, we probably in our city need to, to just do nothing but abatement and compliance, work with city clerk on liens. We just got another $7,000 lien promise yesterday to be paid, which this year we brought in several thousand. It was, that hasn't been done since about 2005. So, it's been, that's been a process and it's very painstaking. The only other comment that I would have on the budget itself is, this is about the fourth, maybe the fifth year we've done a different format, and it gets very hard to follow when we change format year after year. So, I would like to see a format adopted that would be, you know, kind of where it's understandable by just anybody who can pick it up and look at it and read it as far as comparing it to the year before and, and that thing. So, last year, we went back to the old way, and now we're going a different way. So, I just, the consistency on the format's what I'm, what I'd like to see.
Go ahead.
Ray, sir, are we going to be out of compliance with the EQ or?
We are out of compliance.
We are currently out of compliance. Will we be out of compliance with Mr. Smith's sweeper position as well?
With the current permit, yes. The DEQ's adding more and more requirements. And I think there, talked to Taylor, there was, there's 24 BMPs right now that we're supposed to be meeting, and I think they're going to come up with three more. So, you're looking at 27 BMPs that they're going to be coming at us with.
And Keith, that was one of the surprises when we took office was we thought that we had a solid stormwater management program, and we actually got some notification from the DEQ that we were out of compliance pretty significantly. And so, we were working with some other entities with GRDA and the Water...
Illinois Watership Partnership.
To help shore us up over this last year while we regrouped. So...
But we are working, trying to get that.
Yeah. It's, it's a constant battle. It takes someone's attention every day to be working on the stormwater issues with our community. Understand where Telfa is, is unique in, in the United States, simply because of the town branch that runs to the middle of it that goes into a protected waterway, the river. And everything in there has to go back to 1972 as far as water quality. The issue is, is nobody knows what the water quality was in 1972. So, they furnish these, they have protected species. It's nowhere else in the world. They have a dart, a fish. They have a salamander that's, the Telfa salamander that exists nowhere else in the world. All those things need to be protected. We have to work with Telfa Public Works through their sewer department to find leaks to try to keep E. coli and contaminant out of the creek. So, it is a full-time job just in stormwater alone. And in abatement and stormwater and construction, all three of those offices have to work closely together to meet those requirements. And street department, a street sweeper was the promise, was we'll do the street sweeper. But the street sweep, you know, that keeps, that keeps stuff out of the storm sewer.
Let me add to what Ray said there. In fact, I was here when we wrote the first stormwater program. And that's what he was talking about back in, back in, every five years, your permit comes through. You have to renew it, modify it, or whatever, or, you know, they add things to it, whatever. TB Mac did the modeling for the water quality for the Illinois River back when I was here. It took them three years. Basically, they took our, our load that we're dumping now and tried to come up with a model of what water would have looked like back in '72. So, once they come up with that, then we had to go through litigation and all that to say, here's our standards. Here's what they would have been then, and what we believe they would have been. Here's what they are now, and here's where we're going to, going back down to the '72, you know, years there. So, with that being said, some of our BMPs is that people are mowing grass and not supposed to be cutting the grass and going out into the curb and gutter where it goes to the creeks, you know? And we're gonna do all of our sweeping of our streets, picking up leaves, stuff like that, and like the gates, water crossing, the low water slabs, you know, not let pour, wash off your car, things like that. So, they're, they're little things, but all in all, we've still said, here's what we're gonna do. So, I just kind of give you guys a, a kind of a look at what took place to get to where we're at today.
And Kevin, you said this is the year we're up to renegotiate that or?
Every five years, just like.
This is our year. Lucky us.
Just, just like with any permit you have with DEQ, it comes up, they have to look at it and review it and stuff like that. You know, it's, and it's, you know, so, that's where you're at.
When does that happen this year? Like?
This year, July.
July?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I said the other day in an interview, we're behind the eight ball because we should have been looking at these things that we're deficient in and trying to improve them, either that or write them out of your program.
Right.
So...
The DEQ is, and we, we built a relationship with them this last year with the DEQ, Richard.
You guys are interesting.
Played Dodge the polls. So, anyhow, the relationship we built with the EQ, with Mr. Brown, we had him. We had him on a program, discussed with him what direction we were gonna go. He was helping us. Unfortunately, two weeks after we met with him, he contacted Taylor and I and said, hey, look, I've been transferred. I'm no longer in your district. I'm, I'm somewhere else. You're gonna get a new person. Well, we haven't seen or heard from the new person yet, but we have heard that it, the EQ's not gonna be messing around moving forward. Again, what Kevin spoke about is blowing grass out into the street, picking up the, doing the street sweeping. All of that stuff is going to compile on even abatement because when you don't have that code enforcement officer that can drive around and say, hey, sweep up the grass out of the street because, you know, it's, it's all day long driving around, picking up road sale signs, keeping trash out of the field, doing the, the, the grass clippings out of the street, making sure that the creeks are mowed because somebody's house is getting flooded because they have a ditch that's full of, full of weeds and logs and trash, and it just backs up into their front door. And then now we have that stormwater issue. So, that's, it's, it all, it all melts together, and you have to have a, you know, people in those positions to be able to handle it.
I have a question, Ray, and Kevin, both of you, is the, is that street sweeper position historically, is that come out of managerial? Is that at, is that at the street department, or is that out of stormwater, or can that cost be shared?
That, that cost can be shared because that's one of, that's one of your deals, wasn't it? That's, that's your, with the feed you're collecting from like every meter that's out there, you know, each stormwater feed, they can buy the equipment and stuff like that. And one year, one time they did fund it, the street, the sweep, street sweeper out of that position, you know, you know, the, the equipment out of that stormwater.
But the equipment, is it the equipment that we can pay out of stormwater, or is it, is it salary?
You can, you can do either one because if, if, if it boils down to, to your stormwater program, that's what people pay money for. You know, we've been collecting for a good while here. So...
Yeah. Kevin, remind me, when was the last time the stormwater fee was adjusted? We had a price increase with stormwater.
I don't know.
It's been significant, correct?
I don't, I don't recall. I mean, because you get into it, whether or not you're gonna be charged by the major or you're gonna be charged by, by solid services, like, like where Walmart would use an example. They have a large parking lot that pay more. Well, now you get the huge headache. So, what they, what we're doing is, if you have a meter, residential meter, it's this much. If you have commercial meter, certain size, it's this much based on size and water meter.
You're basically gonna get $2 a meter for a residential, and then it goes up from there to even to a commercial size where it's, it's like 24 bucks a meter monthly that pays, depending on the size of the water you're taking in. It's, it's based on water, best guess, water usage, you know, how much each household would use for water or how much residential business would use or apartment complex, so forth and so on. So, and right now, I think, Alan, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've got just a little under a million dollars in that account.
We did. When we appropriated $125,000 for professional services in stormwater management, that could accommodate this request. There is budget for it.
And we may also, I mean, obviously TPWA, we recently did a rate analysis and did a, you know, minimal rate increase. And if that stormwater's a fee that's not been increased in 15, 18, 30 years. I mean, Kevin, you were here, what, 32 years? I don't remember the adjustment in that fee.
37, but, but that, that didn't come about until back in the 90s when we implemented the program.
So, most likely, it was implemented in the 90s and hasn't been adjusted since.
I don't believe.
So, in theory, that would be something that we could analyze and look at and possibly increase to accommodate growing DEQ demands such as this.
That is, that is correct. I mean, you know, that's up to you guys how we all implement that fee there because your PMBs, they, they're, they're gonna be another requirement coming up. Like you said, that's one of the three.
Yeah. And like I said, they're gonna add three to that from our best guess. Nobody can guarantee what the EQ's going to say. We can only guess what they're going to try to do and what kind of what we hear and what they, they said they're going to do. So, that, talking with Incog and I sit on Zoom meetings and seminars and classes with them on a monthly basis and hearing what they're saying is they're, they're, they're just getting more and more strict. And the, yeah, you know, the world's, hey, it's, it's a dirty place out there, and we're trying to clean it up.
And you're saying that fees are basically $2?
Basically $2 per household, yeah.
So, I'm pretty sure you can't even buy a can of pepper for $2 now. So, that's probably something that we do.
Yeah. And, you know, the thing is, is, and it's great to have that fund, and those people pay for that. We don't have to reinvest that. We have to reinvest that back into those stormwater issues that we're having, like up at Wheeler Edition or over on Francis Street, where people got water running in or down, out on Willis Road where we need a concrete canal the entire way to meet into another, because people can't even mow their yards until August because it's all the impervious surface that was put in on where the grade school is, and South Ridge is now, now affecting them. Every time somebody puts a roof, pours a driveway, builds a street, that increases the water flow downstream from them somewhere. And that's, that's, that's the issue, is just trying to find out the best way. A lot of this will come, Alan will tell you, professional services pay for water hydrology reports. Engineers have to step in, you know, I'm not educated to do this stuff. I don't, I don't know much about stormwater, but what I've learned over the last year. And somebody that has that area of expertise and education needs to be in there to be able to do that. And hopefully soon, we've got a couple of really good candidates that we're looking at, you know? And we have one more that we're going to look at. So, get that position filled, get that code enforcement person going along with our new building inspector who just passed one of his exams yesterday. Congratulations to him. And so, get those three working together harmoniously for the betterment of our, our town. I think that we can make some genuine improvements with some of that stormwater fund. And again, not to leave out our street commissioner over here with, and the street sweeper because even though we may butt heads with them, stormwater and the street department do tend to butt heads. They want to do, they want to get the water out. We want to retain it and let it flow.
Ray, what we said yesterday, I'm about quantities, and you're about quality.
Yeah. He's about quantity, and I'm about quality.
There you go.
Chris? Kevin, how many street sweepers do we own? Sorry, Chris, I'm not trying to steal your thunder.
We have one, and Keith ran it for, for 28 years, you know? So, that, like I said, it's not a position that we get periodically through in there. He come on at, at 3:00 at night, swept when no one was out on the street, stuff like that. So, that's the thing about it is, we will, we will take care of, Mayor, that when people call and say, hey, that's like if someone dumped much nails up here by Mr. O, well, I called Mr. O, Easy Morning Report, they will, they'll sweep it, you know? So, so, I mean, these, these places like this here, you know, that when they call, but we're not gonna be able to put someone out there at nighttime the way we was. So, people that got their sleep disturbed, they'll sleep better, and the people that like their street swept will be, you know, an issue.
My, my question would be, is that at 3:00 in, in the morning is probably, or AM, is probably the best time to do it because of less traffic?
That's it.
So, it doesn't coincide with what a normal workday would be?
He gets Main Street, first thing he does, he did Main Street into Yucca Tua and College, and he got in the residential after it kind of got.
I know it was a stupid question, but I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was.
There's no questions. That's...
Like, the solid waste down there, like, we have to follow DEQ a lot. Like, we're, like, heavy on DEQ and, like, they'll, like, they'll shut you down. Like, they'll shut the gates, and there's nothing you can really do until you get cleared out. But like, I don't, I'm not trying to say, like, I, I don't have like a solution for that, but like, I have like a temporary. Like, if you guys need me to go and run a street sweeper at 5:00 in the morning because nobody wants to get a trash call from me at 5:00 in the morning. Like, I don't even want to call my wife at 5:00 in the morning. So, like, if you need me to load up and drive for a couple hours, three, three hours, you know? Like, I'm more than happy to help you guys do it. Like, I can drive whatever you guys throw at me, right hand, left hand, on the back, on top, whatever. But that's just something, I was gonna throw that out there because, like I said, you don't wanna, you don't want me calling nobody at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning. So, I usually do my paperwork and drive around town and check on things. So, if y'all need me to drive it for, like, a temporary deal, just holler at me, let me know.
That's extremely generous.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I feel like that might be fun. I think we should all take a turn on the street sweeper.
Hey, riding and driving is a little weird, but...
Did you say he came at 3:00 in the morning for 20 years, worked for, 3:00 in the morning for eight hours?
Like, coming in that early, operating like a vehicle is the best way to do it. Like, if I can do it with my guys, would come in at 3:00, but people don't like the sound of our music dumping dumpster. But like, like, it just eliminates all traffic. Like, it, like, the risk, the high risk of, like, accidents and stuff drops way down because people are sleeping, and you can actually get to the curbs and everything. So, like, it's, it's awesome getting out there.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
Let's do it.
Coffee shops will open at 3:00 in the morning.
Council, do you have anything you'd like to address as relates to the budget here? We are not taking action, but we are discussing.
When I was looking at this one, it's the first time I've seen it. But I think the treasurer only makes $12,000, but in the budget, it's 13.
Well, in this budget, and that's what he was talking about, about it being different. In the last budgets, when we had new employees, we listed their salary, their longevity, their education, and all of their benefits strung out across. All, what this does is take their salary and put it in one column, and their benefits, and put it in the other.
Right. But the salary for the treasurer is listed as 13, and then the benefits are 1,028, 30, or total are 14.
It got a raise at the...
At that last time when we raised?
Again?
When we raised elected employees.
Elected officials.
Okay.
It was a raise.
I don't remember that. I thought we brought them all to 12. We'll go with the paper.
Other questions?
Stephen, they are correct.
Kevin, what about the heat machine that you wanted, the heat sealer thing?
It's in there.
It's in there now?
It's in there. Yes. And I, and I know you all, Alan, Mayor, you've all done a good job. Like I said, now it's, now it's on your all's back. They did their, their legal obligations.
They did their, their legal obligations since you guys have balanced budgets. Fortunately, you guys now gotta pick through it all. Good luck.
You're enjoying being on that side of this.
You bet. I've said that more than once with you, Alan.
Is there anything else?
So are we gonna look at putting the street sweeper back into the budget? At least that position?
I think that we will definitely be considering that, yes.
Me too.
And I think that it, I mean, it, it sounds kind of like maybe we wanna, there's a potential to either put it all in, in stormwater or to split the cost between the two?
Well, our revenue in general fund, you know, again, we don't really know what our revenue will be. And so salaries are one of those ongoing costs, but continue to grow with raises and benefits and that sort of thing. And so we know what our revenue is in stormwater. And if I were just voting off the top of my head, I would kind of vote toward let's put it in stormwater as opposed to the general fund.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it matters. I mean, to me, it doesn't matter. I think that from this talk, it's something that we need. If we wanna split it, we can. If not.
My, my salary split up uh this last year, it was split up uh 25% of my salary comes out of stormwater, rest out of managerial. Uh, and, and I don't have any issues with uh putting some of the stormwater money, money towards uh helping keep our, our street sweep. Because I, I think it's an important uh important thing we provide, so.
I mean, this last year's been tumultuous. I don't know if you guys checked Facebook this morning, but a year ago today, we were doing our ribbon cutting reopening for the city from being closed from the pandemic. And so, I mean, kind of today's a big deal. Did you not realize how much and how quickly that time goes by? And you say one year ago today, we were standing in front of the city of Talalco sign, literally saying, come back to our city, come shop again. And so the fact that the sales tax revenues have continued to be positive is colossal when so many people shifted to other purchasing options.
Yes. And we're hoping that it will continue to, habits will have changed to a point that we continue to see some increases in our sales tax revenue. But it has been a difficult year for everyone. And we are experiencing a whole series of firsts. This is the first stage of the community address yesterday since the pandemic. This is the first public budget hearing since the pandemic. You know, everything we're doing is another first right now. And, and they're each one to be celebrated.
Balance budget alone is to be celebrated. So when you look at where we were at financially two years ago, where we're at today, it's, it's amazing.
It is, it is. Are there any other questions, comments? If not, I would.
What's the process to modify the budget at this point? I mean, as far as if we wanna um change the, I mean, I know, has it come out on Monday?
It, it won't be Monday. It will be the mid-month, but it comes for your approval, for your acceptance of the budget. So, yes.
Between now and the 17th, you're on it.
And that's why we um instead of having it come before you Monday night, we wait until the next meeting so that we do have time to make some changes.
Because I think, I think there's plenty of room in that, just in the $1,000 for property and right of way purchases to, you know, to fund, fully fund or partially fund our street commissioners.
If we segregate in that stormwater management fund, that will show the EQ that we are serious about spending money on stormwater management issues.
And like the mayor said, that's kind of a, you know, that doesn't deviate a lot as far as what the cash flow is unless we just add a bunch of new customers, new TPWA customers, so.
Trey, this last year, we purchased a, a piece of property with stormwater money. Uh, this next month, there'll be another purchase of that property that you guys approved with stormwater money down off Basin Street. So uh, you know, the right of way uh purchasing is an, uh, an intricate part of that because it's, it's to get people out of those waterways that do contaminate. So uh, important as well, but I think there's plenty enough money in there to be able to, to make things happen to keep this program.
Trey, your legal deadline is 15 this month here to pass the stuff.
Sorry, Kevin, what'd you say?
You have a legal deadline this month here to pass, I believe, what is it now, 15?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, you got, what is it, 10 days, five days?
Twenty-fifth, we're set up okay.
So when do you need our recommendations to change the budget? At what date?
Okay.
As soon as you've got a recommendation, you should contact Mr. Chapman.
Okay.
But the reason for these public hearings, both the one that we had at our council meeting last month and this one, is to suggest changes and to discuss things that may have been missed or overlooked in the budget. So we appreciate the conversation today and we appreciate that of the last public hearing.
May I step up here, ask a question here? I think I heard you say that the, the procedure to, to like to make a modification to the budget, was it just to call administration or?
I was just asking when, when we need to have that or is it like being new? I, I, I'm trying to learn.
Based upon what we've heard today and what we believe is the intent or the preference of the council, our finance department will go back and modify the budget packet. And we will update the cover letter from the mayor and then what gets presented to the council. And you'll have it in your packet to review one last time.
Well, I, I do have one that eventually I, I would like to share with you and, and we'll go over that.
Well, okay. My next question is, let's say that uh someone, someone probably, Trey makes a suggestion as far as modifications. And don't you think that that suggestion should be out in open public?
I have no problem with that.
Well, every, every time the budget comes forward, even on that final one where the council would be voting, we would be saying, here are the modifications that have been made to this. We aren't going to be making modifications that we don't tell the public. This is what we've done and why we've done it. It was a suggestion of Councilor Ratliff's. And we've looked at it and we've put it in here for your final approval.
And already I said it because I've said it here, we've, to that for a minute, I adopted these budgets here. Because it's best to get it in here, my opinion, my opinion. I only have it set and done, modifications are made right here and then you, you're gonna go. But that's because, because you all have met your legal obligations.
Well, legal obligations are one thing, but you know, our obligation to our residents and to deal fairly and not hide what we're doing, that's, that's just critical to trust. And, you know, our, our government, our city government is really trying to be very open. And we're, we're not trying to hide anything from our residents.
Be the way it should be, but I'm just saying though, you're gonna get it back. Not careful, it's gonna be like you're out there playing tennis. One side's gonna hit the ball, the other side's gonna hit it back.
Well, the, the next time this comes forward, council has to approve it. It, it, you know, if we have to make a change while we're sitting there, then that's where we make that. But
That is true.
The, it has to be approved at that particular point.
Like I said, I've been in here where there's that um, keep pad there where adding subtracting is to get it balanced. So, okay, I'm good.
That being said, and I'm gonna interject here, the previous budgets were not necessarily put together with input from the department.
I'll tell you what, for, for, for all the years I was here, it was.
Well, there's some stuff that went on after you left.
Well, I'm.
But.
I don't know what just went on after I left. I'm just saying.
But that's why Alan was stressing that, and you can ask Chris and you can ask Ray and we've met, what, three times with PD and Fire. That's how we were able to even last year pass the budget without a lot of issues. Because everybody knows exactly where we stand when they walk out of the door and we've had our meetings and there's no surprises. And they've had plenty of times to look at the budget. They have copies of the budget.
Over 17 years, when I was here, we passed the balanced budget. Now, there was times it didn't happen after I left. You know, and I think you said the other day at a meeting that this is the first time y'all passed one, you've been here.
Yes.
So talking about being legal, that's also an issue.
That, yes, it is. And we are glad to be back on this side of.
Well, one, one thing, and I'm, I'm sorry I was late. We had T-ball games, makeup T-ball games this morning and uh almost had a fight at a T-ball game between four parents.
Oh.
Nine thirty in the morning, you know.
Carrie, you were in the wrong spot.
And Alan, Alan and the mayor and, um, and I had discussed this yesterday and Keith about um, you know, something that was really, to me, there was four and a half million dollars that was missing in this budget that we had to try to allocate for. Um, and I don't know if you guys spoke to that before I got here. Did we talk about?
No, no.
Okay. So one thing I think that the public really needs to know is for the 2013 bond issue, you know, historically, if you go back to the 18, 19, the 19, 20, and the 20, 21 budgets, that four and a half million dollars, what's left of the 2013 bond collection historically has been included in this, uh, in this city budget. However, this year it's not um because to my understanding, it is part of the Talalco Public Facilities Authorities Budget. And so those items, those items are included solely in that, in that department because it's basically a different account of which those expenditures come out of. And so I think anybody that's looking through there and starts to look, because I think that will be something that folks look for, is that four million some odd dollars and how much is left and where is it at and why isn't it in this one? I think that, you know, they need to be made aware, at least publicly, that there is, you know, it has been allocated for, has been accounted for, but it's in a different, stands in a different budget.
It, it is in the budget that will be coming toward council at five o'clock on Monday.
So I, I, you know, it made sense to me. I mean, it makes sense to me. I just felt like, and I talked to a couple of you guys about it. And so if I hadn't talked to you specifically about it, that's, that was the answer that I got yesterday. It is in the Talalco Public Facilities Authority budget.
And, and just clarification from that conversation that we had yesterday, uh, we pointed out that the audit comes in and pulls it out of the city's financial reports. So because it is not a part of the city as an entity. Okay. Anything else? If not, I mean, then entertain adjournment. Did we have a roll call?
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Counsel Baker?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Vetha?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
That was fun.
Appreciate you all.